Uh, correct. We do need the tenants first.
So roll call. Roll call if you will. Counselor Agarman?
Here.
Counselor Junta?
Present.
Counselor Hartquist?
Present.
Counselor Hirsag?
Here.
Counselor Kinsey?
Present.
Counselor Tontar?
Present.
Counselor Vogel?
Here.
Counselor Cameron?
Here.
Counselor Cronin?
Present.
Counselor O'Brien is not here. Counselor Connell?
Present.
Thank you, Counselor Vogel. And now we have a couple of late-file items. What's the rule of the council?
A motion to accept late-file items, waive the rules and accept late-file items.
Okay. Give us a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then the clerk's going to insert these in the appropriate place in the agenda tonight. There were three items.
One is, by my mistake, Mr. President, one's Communication Number Three. There is also a Communication Number Four, which would be the mayor's update. And then, because we'll take those up right at the beginning of the regular agenda before appointments. And then we have an order, which is Order Number Two, which will take up right after Order Number One. That's the Cable Advisory Committee order.
Uh, so that's the motion.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. There's also a sheet on your desk, which is neither. It's just there for information purposes. It's already in your packet. It's slightly revised, that's all. That's on the Spring Walk for Troops.
I believe it's time for public comment. People have signed in? There are three people addressing items that are on tonight's agenda, starting out with Frank. Looks like Paluso. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Yeah, yeah, right. Paluso.
Very well. Could you come up to the microphone, please?
Frank Paluso, Leventeau Run, President of the Patriots for American Veterans Organization, Inc. I guess I'm here for questions on the Spring Walk, which is going to be held April 27th. And it's really not going to tie up the streets. It's a two-mile walk, which will start at the Boat Club. Walk on the boardwalk or harbor walk, through Michael's Harbor Side parking lot, back onto Harbor Front Park Walk. Turn up at the Firehouse Center on the brickwork walkway, and continue across the street to Inn Street. Take a right on Pleasant Street, and then down to Market Street, back into the parking lot of Michael's, and back on the boardwalk toward back into the start of the walk, which would be the Boat Club. So I think the impact would be minimal on the flow, and the people will be leaving groups, maybe one or two people. It's going to be a poker walk. So it's not a run, and it's not start at nine o'clock, just take off. It's two-hour registration.
Very well. Are there any questions from the members? Thank you, Mr. Paluso.
Thank you.
Mark Finland, from the Lions Club.
Modern or reverse, because I've never been to one of these things. I'm Mark Finland. I'm from the Report Lions. We want to put an old mailbox downtown somewhere, and we want people to drop eyeglasses and everything. And it just be, I called the post office, ma'am, and they told me to come to the council meeting first. If anybody wants to see one, Ainsbury Lions has it at the post office in Ainsbury, if anybody wants to see it. The postmaster said we have to give them a key also, in case any mail goes in it. And it'll say, "No mail." It'll be all Lions stickers on it. And that's all I have to say. I'll be president next year, so I want to do this in my president's year, so. Thank you for having me, counsel. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Finland. Any questions from the members?
I gotta leave, because I got a line to meet.
I have a quick question. I'm sorry. Are you going to make a formal request through the council? Is that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing it doesn't state is the spot.
Do you have any questions? Call me in.
Counselor? You have a question?
I've said the only thing that it doesn't state is the spot, and it's something that needs to be covered.
Oh, yeah. I'm going to leave it up to the councils and the mayor and the city. Whether they want to put it, we don't, you know, we don't care where we put it. You know, Lions, you know, it's up to the councils and the mayor, whether they want to put it.
I think what I'd recommend is that you speak with the city clerk and the city marshal, and see if they have an opinion on the right placement, so you get good access, and it's not a nuisance to pedestrians.
Okay.
Come see me tomorrow. Come see me tomorrow. I'll see you tomorrow.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine, I believe it is Krefte. I apologize.
Hi, my name is Catherine Krefte, and I'm hoping to join the Commission for Diversity and Tolerance. I've been approved by the commissioners, and I've met with the mayor, and I'm hopeful that you will approve me as well.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Thank you, Catherine. That concludes the public comment period. It's now time for the mayor's comment. Mayor Holliday?
Thank you, Catherine. I appreciate the opportunity to, once again, give you a quick update. You have a full written report that becomes part of the record before you. Would like to start by thanking the Subcommittee on Planning and Development for running a very professional and important meeting on the two ordinances to adjust historic preservation in our communities, sponsored by or developed by Counselor Agarman. I look forward to working with you as we continue moving through the process to modify these ordinances. And I appreciate all the work that we've done in this area. Would also like to just update you quickly on a meeting we had on February 12th in Ward Two with Counselor Agarman was there on the disposition of the Brown School. It was very, very well attended by the residents surrounding the Brown School as we talked about options for the reuse. As we've talked about before, the Kelly School is in need of a tremendous amount of work, and that at this juncture, it appears the most appropriate move would be to put a historic preservation on the Kelly School, sell that building, move youth services to the first floor of the Brown School, preserving the playground, the basketball court, and the, you know, air-open space area, and amphitheater or parts of it for the neighborhood, as well as the gym and classroom space for youth services. We are struggling with what to do on the second and third floor. Had lots of conversations about the possibility of affordable, market-rate senior housing, and maybe artist studios on the third floor. We need some support from an outside feasibility study, and we'll be working with the planning office to submit a transfer to you, probably at your next meeting, in order to move forward on having a feasibility study done there, so that we can get some help with that decision. Also, the state has been working on a $12 billion transportation bond bill. We started our conversations with Representative Costello, working on items that we would like in that bond bill, and then currently are working with Senator Ives on the Senate's version of the transportation bond bill. The highest priority for the city is for funding for our intermodal facility or garage, and we have requested a $5 million allocation in the transportation bond bill for that. We've also included money for some upgrades to swales and the roads, and some other amenities in the business park, again, focusing on the, you know, economic development of that area of our city. We've asked for some money to repair the entire High Street. It is in need of paving, particularly after this winter. We've also asked for money to repair the bridges on Washington and High Street that are owned by Mass TOT, that our rail trail goes underneath them, and they're in pretty rough shape. We're looking also at rail trail, which will go on the tip in terms of moving forward on Phase Two of that project. And we're hoping that these items get included in the transportation bond bill, or at least are priority for the intermodal facility. We are meeting with Washamacore tomorrow to finalize our litigation agreement for, hopefully, for them using city property for the next three years as they work on the Whittier Bridge project. And that includes the paraglass for the shared-use path that you've heard me talk about several times, as well as the fence, the barrier that will be for the protection of the residents who live in the Laurel Brigs neighborhood. We're hoping to increase the height of that particular fence, as well as extend it up to where the new Pine Hill Bridge will connect. So we will, I'll have more information to you on how that meeting goes shortly thereafter. As you are aware, there was the potential, and we're still not sure. The conditions are very, very difficult out by the directional drill area on Plum Island. We did have soft ground and some extra water. It tested high for fluoride, which is indicative of the potential of a water main break. But through, was out there for, you know, half an hour, 40 minutes last week with the gentleman from DPS, but they actually couldn't track it down. Ground is very, very difficult to work out there. They're continuing to monitor it closely. It could be a pinhole, but we will continue to keep you updated on what we find in that situation. As you know, the master plan kickoff, very excited about this. The planning office has been working hard. Kate Newell Smith will be the coordinator of this process. Many of you have been asked to participate in one of the 10 subcommittees. This is an important document that guides the direction, vision, and development in our city for the next 10 years. So I hope you will all be able to join us tomorrow night at 6:30 for this kickoff. And after much back and forth, unfortunately, we had to cancel our roundtable that we had scheduled with the NRA, the city, and the city council. But we will, we have come up with a new date for Saturday, March 8th, from 8:00 to 10:00. And I'm looking forward to having a conversation as we begin that process. The budget process for FY '15 is well underway with both the schools and the city, and we will be presenting you with an outline of capital planning needs on April 1st per the new charter. I also just wanted to let you know that we were notified today that we received a government finance officer's award again for distinguished budget award for our FY '13 budget. So my thanks to our finance team, and particularly Ethan Manning and Peter Lombardi, who did yeoman's work on assembling all the documentation to put together that very solid budget for you. So I'm very pleased about that. As you know, snow and ice is what it is. We anticipate maybe another storm on Wednesday, but I have to applaud Tony Fenari and his leadership during this very, very difficult winter in terms of keeping our streets as clear and safe as possible, as well as juggling, you know, when to bring in contractors and really, you know, sort of monitoring the budget as well as with safety issues. Also, just wanted to let you know that Susan Bacaro, our superintendent, received a letter from the Secretary and Commissioner of Education awarding Newburyport High School as one of 48 schools across the Commonwealth that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education recognized as a 213th accommodation school for its high achievement, high progress, and/or narrowing proficiency gap. So I think that's a great honor, and we are also expecting soon the results of our NACI accreditation visit. That happens in October, so certainly we'll share that information with you when we get that information. So thank you for your time. If you have any questions about the updates that I presented.
Counselor Herzog?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question, if you don't mind. The, relating to the transportation bond bill, the, I thank you for much of this, which is definitely needed. The only question I have is the $5 million requested for the intermodal parking facility. You mentioned in your notes here how it would be a joint venture, I'm guessing, with New England Development, and I'm just wondering specifically whether any plans have been filed from that, you know, if it is a joint venture, something I can look at relating to what?
We're not there yet. We have to secure the property first, but it's an excellent question. What we currently have is a letter from Mr. Carpe and New England Development telling us that they're willing to work with us on a public-private venture. So that's a step in the right direction, but we have a lot of work ahead of us in terms of securing the property and then continuing our work with the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority and Ted Ted Barizzo, who is their consultant, who, they have money in their budget for the next two years for design. So, you know, we're starting finally, I think, to see this move forward, and this would be a real important step forward if we could secure this money in the transportation bond bill. So I encourage all of you to reach out to Representative Costello, as well as Senator Ives, and as well as members of the public, to help support these initiatives in the transportation bond bill.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, now I have the pleasure of reading a proclamation that was requested by the Commission on Diversity and Tolerance. I'd like to ask members of the Commission to come and join me here at the mic. Avi Pupka, Reverend Avi Pupka, is the current chair of the Commission on Diversity and Tolerance, and they were, have come up with a very positive idea for declaring March a special month, which I will read to you. So, as they all come around, thank you. Our proclamation, whereas, excuse me. Whereas the goal of this motivating initiative is to raise awareness among residents of the diversities currently existing in Newburyport. And whereas throughout the month of March, the Newburyport Daily News will, through a series of articles, highlight current residents who best reflect our city's diversities. And whereas the Commission for Diversity and Tolerance commissioners have researched and written articles which focus on four major areas of our city's diversity. They are sexual orientation, religion, socio-economic, and ethnicity. And whereas these articles honor the current diversity in Newburyport, while emphasizing the long road the Commission for Diversity and Tolerance has promoting and supporting a sense of welcome, inclusion, and worth for all, and to work towards the elimination of prejudice, acts of hate, intolerance, and discrimination in our community. Now therefore, I, Donna D. Holliday, invite all residents of Newburyport to support this initiative and encourage them to aspire to the goal of eliminating prejudice, intolerance, and discrimination in our community, and proclaim the month of March Diversity Month, given under my hand and seal this 24th day of February in the year 2014. Donna D. Holliday.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank the commissioners. I think it's time for the clerk to walk us through the consent agenda. If you would be so kind as to identify the items that are on the consent agenda.
Sure. The consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the minutes for the February 10th meeting. There are two transfers. The first is Mayor's General Fund Fund, free cash, $8,000, to Board of Registars Elections, $8,000. To be fair about it, I think that's clerk's request. That's in for approval. The auditors claim reserve appropriation in the amount of $7,077.66 to emergency management, maintenance of building, $5,000, and to school department expenses, $2,077. That's in for approval. There are two communications. The first is the Patriots for American Veterans Spring Walk for Troops. It will be held on April 27, 2014. That's to be referred to public safety. And the second is the Newburyport Lions Club Eyeglass Box Request, and that's to be referred to license and permits. There are three first reading of appointments. The first is Catherine D. Press, 6H Street, Commission on Diversity and Tolerance, February 1, 2017. There are two reappointments. William K. Todd, 8 Foster Court, to the Historical Commission, January 1, 2017. And Patty M. Spalding, 5 Britcher Street, to the Highland Cemetery Commission, until February 1, 2017. And that's the consent agenda as it consists this evening.
Are there any items that members would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none. What's the rule of the council?
Motion approved.
Is that seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry. Who was that seconded?
Counselor Tontar. And so we'll move to the regular agenda. We'll start, I guess we should start with communications. We have a late-file communication, isn't it?
Correct. That would be late-file communication number three. It's actually from me. It's a disclosure statement. It is pursuant to 268A, Section 19. It's quite long. I don't think you want me to read through the whole thing.
No.
It is what it is. It can go to committee or?
Motion received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So that's received and filed. Is there another communication here? Yes.
Counselor, I don't mean to second-guess you. It needs an approval or a nonapproval, as opposed to received and filed. I don't know if you knew that.
No, I didn't. I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you. I hesitate to speak up, but.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second again, Counselor Cameron, I believe. Any discussion? Thank you for the correction, okay. Counselor Vogel?
Thank you. I rise and question, where, you want us, in, with regard to your request that we take a look at this, instead of receiving and filing, we are?
You're actually approving a disclosure that I'm making because you're my appointing authority. The city clerk's appointed by the city council. And there is a particular matter in Ward One that has arisen, because I wear a couple of different hats, maybe a gazillion different hats. One is that I sit on the Board of Registars. So that matter will come before the Board of Registars. And what I am asking is to allow me to assemble the documents, but I'm not going to vote on it because, in theory, there's a financial interest that I would have. In other words, it may appear to be inappropriate for me to vote on it, so I would not. And so my request is just that.
I understand. I just want, I actually wanted to get that clear for the public.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
That's no problem.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Very well. And? There's one more item, isn't there? Do we have that on the wall?
Mayor's update.
The mayor's update, which I trust was included in the, wherever the rules fall out. Yes. The members had an opportunity to review the mayor's update. Is there a motion from the floor?
Received and filed.
Yeah, received and filed.
Second.
And the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Are there any other items we have to act on before we begin to the?
Appointing second reading, I think.
Excuse me?
Yep.
Yep.
So the appointments, the second reading of two appointments. Linda Smiley, 7 Atwood Street, to the Community Preservation Act Committee, April 1, 2014. Adam R. Hayden, 76 Longfellow Drive, Newburyport, Assistant Harbor Master Special Police Officer, until December 31, 2014. And there are two reappointments. Stephen Hines, 54 Ferry Road, to the Harbor Commission, March 31, 2017. And Beverly McBurney, 3 Magnolia Street, to the Action Commune Commission, March 31, 2017.
What's the rule of the council?
Motion approved collectively.
Is that seconded? And it is seconded by Counselor Junta, I believe.
Yep, Charlie.
Counselor Tontar.
Yep.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll call.
Roll call.
I'm sorry. The clerk's correct. We need a roll call on that.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Hartquist?
Yes.
Counselor Hirsag?
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien is still absent. Thank you.
Okay, and we have orders next. So the first item on the agenda, would the clerk here to read that for us?
I will.
It is the Master Plan Steering Committee.
It is, it follows. Whereas the City of Newburyport has a master plan steering committee and numerous subcommittees thereunder, and whereas the City of Newburyport is desirous of encouraging the participation on these committees from a broad cross-section of said city, and whereas these are positions for which no compensation is provided, now therefore the City Council of Newburyport hereby designates the master plan steering committee and its subcommittees as special municipal employees pursuant to MGL 268A, Section 1, et al. Submitted Counselor Jarrett J. Agarman.
What is the rule of the council?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. Does this require a roll call?
No, actually it doesn't.
Does it? Okay. Any discussion? Counselor Agarman?
Just very briefly, for the, for the public to understand, in order to have volunteers serve on the steering committee, there could give rise to at least a perceived conflict of interest. And so by using this special municipal employee procedure, we can remove that stigma. That's why this is done. It's highly technical, but there isn't any money changing hands here, and I urge the council to approve it.
Any other discussion? Counselor Herzog?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could direct a question to the sponsor. I have no problem with the concept of this. In fact, I'm one of the people on the, on a subcommittee, so I get the concept. I do not know who are all the people on all the subcommittees. I do not know names and such, and I'm just thinking under general concept of government transparency, it'd be great to know who we're approving before we approve.
If I may, I don't know either. Maybe the clerk can shed some light.
Anticipating that, we actually have a list of all the master plan steering committee members and the subcommittee members that go on for, it looks like, a number of pages. But if you would like, I would hand them out.
Long as, long as you have it, I'm, I'm content.
Terrific, and it will be part of the record.
Thank you.
And for the general public, if anyone wants to scan that list, it'll be in the hands of the clerk. Anytime they walk in, they can demand it.
Be happy to talk to them.
Chance to look at it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We're moving fast. Must be the Celtics game. We are, we have no ordinances up for consideration tonight. Forward to?
Second order, the late file.
I apologize. Stand corrected. The late-file order.
Number two.
Number two? If the clerk would read that, please.
That the City Council of the City of Newburyport hereby appoints Counselor Hirsag to be its representative on the Cable Advisory Committee. Submitted Counselor Robert Cronin.
I'll recuse myself.
It's a highly paid position.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we talk about him?
Counselor Cameron?
I know Counselor Herzog has been talking about this issue with constituents and with us, and I think that would be great to have him involved in this, you know, as, you know, as broadband changes and cable TV changes and Comcast buys more, more and more of the world, and they battle with Netflix and AT&amp;T and Verizon, et cetera. I think it'd be great for his work to be connecting the council to the, to the Cable Advisory Committee, so, because I think that's going to be really important for us, so. Stepping up?
I second that motion.
Is there any, any other discussion? Is there any, any other discussion? What's the will of the council? I guess we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You can come back in, Aaron. Thank you, Congressman. You can read the item in the paper tomorrow morning. I want to keep a few for myself.
I think I voted down.
Okay. Are there any other late files?
No.
Then we can move forward to committee items, budget and finance.
Move to remove item number one, the mid-year budget report.
Second.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Move to receive and file.
You have to move from committee first, counsel.
We haven't had a vote yet.
All those in favor of removing item number one from committee?
Aye.
Opposed? You're up, counsel.
Move to receive and file.
Second. And second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Are there any other items in budget and finance tonight?
Move to remove item number two, the full-time parks director.
Second.
There's a second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you. This motion has come to us from the mayor, as you all know, as we all know. The parks director has had a part-time position officially in the city, although has performed more than a full-time role. And the, the city would benefit from having a full-time director. This would be funded by, next item, which, from a transfer from the unemployment fund. And I, you know, I personally think that this is something that the city would greatly benefit from.
Counselor Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just procedurally, we were going to have a budget and finance committee meeting prior to this meeting, but there was what we call a Scribner's error, and that was not posted. So the committee did not actually meet, but we can take items straight out of committee onto the floor and basically have the discussion that, that we would have had in committee. And, you know, some of this information was, was part of the email packet that we all received, wasn't necessarily part of the, the paper packet. So I don't know if everyone has the information handy, but I'm certainly in favor of this. I think we've heard from a number of constituents. The Parks Commission, Bobble League, sent us a letter as well. And as somebody who has been on the Budget and Finance Committee for the last eight years, I guess it is, and several of those years as chair, during the budget process, we've often discussed parks and the city's support for the parks. We've, you know, gone through in excruciating detail about the individual line items for each park, and we've tried to increase those, and we have over the years. We have increased the, the amount for the paid staff position. I tend to think of these issues not as, as the person who's in the position, but really as the position. I think the job description that we were given as part of this packet is incredibly thorough, and it's a very demanding job. And I certainly think the salary that we're talking about here, and especially in comparison to other communities, is, is really, you know, almost a bargain for the city. I know that we will need to find this money ongoing. It's, the transfer address is how to, how to fund it in this fiscal year, and I'm sure we'll have struggles when we start the process in, in May, but I think this would be a hard one. I also think, you know, having more staff capacity here helps all of the, the different parks commissions. I'm sure even new counselors are aware that there's often tension between, you know, certain commission that is in charge of, whether it be Atkinson, Mosley Woods, Bartlet Mall, and then the advocates for, for all the other parks as well. Just managing all of that communication is really, is really a lot of work. So I, I think it's certainly something that's going to move us forward. I know if, if Mr. President Tom O'Brien was here, he would probably speak out in favor of increasing the recreation aspect of Parks and Rec. And I think that might be something we can do with a full-time person. And, you know, just to speak to the person, Lisa Reed has done a tremendous job, so I think we'd be well served by approving this.
Thank you, counsel. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Any other items out of...
Item number four, a lot of supporting the full-time parks director. Move to remove from committee.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Second by Counselor Cameron. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I guess that takes care of budget and finance. General Government, there's nothing. Joint Ed, nothing. License and permits?
Nothing at this time.
Neighborhood City Services, nothing at this time. Planning and Development?
A small housekeeping matter. Motion to remove item number two from committee.
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
Motion to, motion to refer back to planning and development and as a committee of the whole.
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you. This is really just a very small technical issue. When we originally had these three ordinances before us, two of them, you know, I forget which, which came first, but we referred two of the items to planning and development and as a committee of the whole. And then this one that I've just removed and I'm now re-referring, I suppose is, is probably the word. This will make it consistent with the other two ordinances, the, the purpose being that when we have the joint public hearing with the planning board next week, all counselors will be able to participate in the discussion on this particular item. That was not possible at the last meeting, and that made the, the conversation a little, a little awkward. So it's just really a procedural thing, and then all three will be planning and development and committee of the whole.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Anything else on planning and development?
Just, just to mention, most of us, I think we're there, I think we're all were there. We are continuing the public hearing with the planning board next Wednesday, which I believe is March 5, at 7 o'clock, also in the auditorium. I think that was a great meeting, heard a lot of good, you know, pointed opinions, facts, and just a lot of, I think, constructive feedback. And Counselor Agarman is, is working on incorporating some of those ideas, and we'll be discussing those with the planning board next week.
Thank you, is that it? Public safety.
Yes, motion to remove item one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion, counsel?
This is a communication, thank you, Mr. President. This is a communication from the Newburyport Chamber of Commerce, and it just highlights a list of their ongoing events throughout the year that need city council approval and support. You have in your packet for people at home. It's Spring Invitation Night, Newburyport Spring Fest, Tour Day Elegance, which really is on NRA property, but is listed in the packet. It's, it's a small car show. The big car show, Cruising the 50s, which has been a great success in the downtown, and that is in, on August 14. And that brought literally thousands of car buffs to the city. Riverfront Music Festival, another big event. The Oktoberfest at Cashman Park. The Fall Harvest Festival, which is another festival downtown, which we're fairly used to. Witch's Night Out and Pumpkin Lighting, which is a fun night for the kids and the parents. And then the myriad of holiday activities from the Motor Life Boat bringing in Santa Claus to the waterfront, to the tree lighting, to the parade and Santa's workshop. So with that, I urge approval.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Anything else for public safety, counsel?
Motion to remove item two, Soldiers Assistance Fund Flag Day 5K.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion approved.
Counselor Cronin?
Motion approved.
Second. The motion is moved to second. Any discussion, Counselor Cronin?
This is commonly called the First Lieutenant Derek Hines Soldiers Assistance Fund Race. It's, again, one of the, it's grown to one of the bigger races in town. It's a five day, 5K. Starts on Merrimack Street, near the toll building. They use the North End Boat Club as their headquarters. Steve Hines, who is one of the race chairs, happens to be on the Harbor Commission. He also happens to work law enforcement and brings a large contingent of his constabulary into town to assist with, with local Newburyport PD. As First Lieutenant Derek Hines was, a graduate of West Point in the past. West Point has actually brought several busloads of cadets in their corps in here. So this is really a significant event in the community, and again, I would urge your support in passing this.
Indeed. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, counsel. Public Utilities. Counselor Hesorg?
Yes, Mr. President. Just a brief announcement, kind of save the date, if you will. I've already alerted counselors, but the next meeting of the City Council will be on Monday, March 17. We're not meeting on the 10th, we're meeting on the 17th. And so the next meeting of the Public Utilities Committee, posted also as a committee of the whole, will be on the 17th at 6:30 PM right here in this room to discuss the only item in committee, an item relating to electricity aggregation, creating an opt-in program for, to compete with national grid at better prices.
Thank you, counsel. Rules Committee?
Motion to remove item one, City Council Rule 8A.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Jenta. Discussion, Counselor Cronin?
Thank you. This was brought to Rules Committee attention by our Stephen Clerk, Richard Jones. It seems that when the new charter took effect, a provision was excluded from the charter that had governed majority and majority votes by this council. This rule covers that exception, which predicates all votes on a full council. And it's just reestablishing what we've always done, but it had to be codified in some way, so it's in the rules now. Thank you, Counselor Jones. I urge your approval.
Any comments or questions?
Just a question, I don't, I don't, I don't have the charter handy. So how, where does it say that ordinances, do all ordinances need to be a supermajority, or is it just zoning ordinances?
Zoning.
And that's specified, specified by mass general law?
Yes, I believe it is, correct.
So it doesn't have to be set in our charter or in our ordinances or in our...
This addresses, Colonel Light, Mr. President, this addresses, in the old charter, it used to be that it was a full majority of the, we used to call it a hard eight, a hard six. So if it was a supermajority or a majority, it would always be eight, even if there were just nine here, or it'd be six if there were just nine here. And then, for whatever reason, it's, the orders, motions, and resolutions fell out of the new charter, even though ordinances are in there. Makes sense? So in other words, so in other words, this would avoid menu shopping and avoid looking to see who might not be here if, if one wanted to play the game of bringing something in when not a full council was present. I always thought that was the intent.
Counselor Agarman?
I defer to the city clerk. I'm really no parliamentarian, but I, I do have a question on motions, because I know that the ways that we act, we act by ordinance, order, resolution. It's just motion, to me, looked like a, you know, that could be point of order or closure or...
You can certainly take that out. I mean, it is, doesn't rise to the level of ordinance, certainly, but motion's a form of an order, so I threw it in.
The only, I, I, I don't want to belabor this, but the only reason I raise is when we were handed in our orientation a sheet of some of the Roberts rules, there are some motions that do require a two-thirds.
You know, I'm thinking here that it says majority or, probably should say, supermajority in the event so necessary.
Okay.
But let's, if I might make that...
Might that fall under rubric of a Scribner's correction?
Well, no, I think it's a really good legal correction.
Do we want to vote on it?
Majority or supermajority if so required.
We could do it by amendment right now.
Yes.
I'd move, I'd move that to amendment.
Second. Is there a second to amend that?
I'd second it.
Counselor Agarman seconds that amendment. So we have first vote on amending the order. Is there any question about what we're voting on? Counselor Jenta?
Can we just read how it, how it's going to read out on the ordinance, everybody?
It would, it would state, except as otherwise provided by law, the affirmative vote of the majority or supermajority, if the same be necessary, of the full council shall be required to adopt any ordinance, order, motion, or resolution.
Okay. So we're going to vote on the amendment to the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we have the amended order still before us.
Motion approved.
It's already been moved.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to read it again, Richard?
Well, no, I was just saying, I'd be happy to, but I think it needed a second, so...
Yeah, let's do another second on that.
Okay.
I'd second it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel. So this is the amended motion.
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, the motion passes. Thank you, Counselor Agarman, for the...
Thank you.
For the inquiry and correction. Rules Committee is done. Good of the order. Counselor Cronin?
I'll, I'll be brief, but I just want to bring this to counsel's attention, and hopefully we can maybe move forward and get this corrected. In the past, our Water and Sewer Department has had a payment plan, and that payment, we pay quarterly. And for some of the seniors or other people that had special circumstances, there's a monthly payment option, which provided people that maybe didn't have that big chunk of, monthly payment option, which provided people that maybe didn't have that big chunk of money for a payment, could spread that out over the three months. They weren't getting a break, they were just getting a budgetary, easier way to pay their bills. I've learned that this has been stopped, and to me, it's unfortunate. And I would ask that, you know, perhaps this could be reexamined, you know, it helps our most vulnerable citizens. You look now, we can do Bill Pay Online. This is a fairly easy, and we're doing this automated now. I don't see why we should be putting an extra burden on people that don't need a burden. So I'm throwing that out there. I don't know that there's a lot the council can do, other than if somebody asks you, perhaps you could support this type of payment thing. And thank you for listening.
If I might, Counselor, if you would draft a letter from the council, and we could empower the clerk to sign on our behalf, if that was the will of the council, that would be one way to communicate our concern, our support for the payment plan option that used to be in place. And that letter would go to the commissioners.
I would be happy to do it if, obviously with everybody's review, but...
Is that acceptable to the members? Let me put that forward to discussion first. Counselor Cronin?
Just procedurally, I mean, it's not an item on our agenda. I think if Counselor Cronin wrote a letter himself to the, to those two, well, actually to the one board now, right, to the Water and Sewer Commission?
Two boards.
Okay, well, to the two boards, just from you, and I'm sure they would give us a response for the next meeting, and if there wasn't a response, if you just submitted that letter as a communication, we could approve that, and, you know, that gets the message sent.
Does that sound reasonable, Counselor?
I can do it both ways, you know, send it to them and put it in the packet. That way, everybody will have a copy and can review it.
Fair enough.
Good idea.
That requires no specific action. Thank you for calling that to our attention. Any other items? Counselor Cronin?
Thank you, Council President. I want to encourage my fellow counselors and anyone watching to check out the Superintendent Ricardo's new entry plan. It was just, she put it out on February 3. Rather than go into reading it for you, I just want to point out that she broke her plan into numerous areas, instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, professional culture, governance, and especially the fiscal management piece.